All right, it is 9:00 AM. I'll call a meeting to order, meeting of the Carver Select Board for Friday, September 10th, 2001. Uh, I'm sorry, 2021. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings in several committees. Please refer to the Select Board page on our website for listing and application. If we can all rise for the in pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Belvin, could you read our community prayer?
Yes, sir. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all what we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. And as tomorrow is the 20th anniversary of 9/11, if I could just ask everyone for a moment of silence in honor of everyone that was affected by those events. Our first item this morning is citizens' participation. Are there any members of the public? Ms. Slavin.
Do you mind if I get these out?
That.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Thank you. Thanks. For those who don't know me, my name's Emily Slavin. I live at 179 Bean Street here in town. So further down in the agenda, South Shore Action for Hope is asking for a one-day liquor license for a cornhole fundraiser. This liquor license is for a bartending service out of Midtown that's donating their time to provide drinks to everyone who attends the event. But before the vote on this event, I wanted to share a little bit about the event and about South Shore Action for Hope. Many of you might remember me in years past coming in front of you under another nonprofit, but today I'm proudly to say I'm a co-founder of South Shore Action for Hope. This year, we became a 501(c)(3). Our mission is to bring hope to families battling childhood illness and disease by increasing awareness and raising money to fund research for a cure. In the past, in September, we've been raising money and awareness for childhood cancer to help these, those kids who are fighting and those who have lost their lives, including Zach King from here, from Carver. In the years past, it was because of our community, we were able to raise so much money, and we're excited to be part of it again this September. This year, we'll continue to do the same as we've done in the past. We'll just be under a new name, South Shore Action for Hope. We have had many things planned, and we invite you guys to stop by some of our events. So we're going gold for hope. As we raise awareness and funds for a trial at Children's Hospital that we can help children battling cancer, the events that we are doing are simple things as we are doing a car wash on Saturday right here in front of the old police station. We are having the cornhole tournament that I mentioned the following Saturday at the Sportsman's Club. Thank you for their donation of their facility. They always are helping us. We are also lighting up the night in the center of town will be lit up with bags and memory of those who are fighting and those who lost their battle, and that will be the end of the month. We do that every year. It's so nice to drive through town. If you have your family, go through some neighborhoods, check out what all the people putting out bags. And we have a great community. I have to say, we probably have a team of 30. Thank you, Jim Hoffman. He also volunteers for this charity. So we're excited to see what's to come in the future. But after September, this new nonprofit might, isn't just gonna go away. So we're gonna do other things throughout months to help childhood diseases. It's not just cancer. And November, we'll be doing a diabetes. My co-founder, Susie Golden from Plymouth's daughter was diagnosed with type 1 diabetes, and so we're gonna raise money with Jocelyn's for diabetes. And then you might see things throughout the year in this winter that we can all attend, and I have suggestions on maybe what someone else in this town is fighting. So we're here on the South Shore to kind of make a difference. So thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Yeah, so check out our website. Everything's right in here in the pamphlet, and we're excited. Anyone have any questions for me?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jimmy, make a motion that we take that out of order, that one, and we vote for that. She's here.
I was going to ask for that motion. Let me just see if there's anyone, any other citizens that would like to address the board, and then we can address that issue. Is that okay? Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the board? All right, seeing none. We have a motion from Mr. Belvin to take the one-day license out of order. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Mr. Townsend.
Hi.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to recuse myself. Emily said I'm also a volunteer member of this group, so I wanna vote.
Okay.
This vote is just to take it out of order, correct?
Yes, that vote is just to take it out of order. That's fine. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we have a request for a one-day special license from bartending service of New England on September 18th, 2021, from noon to 5:00 PM, path to Carver Sportsman's Club. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Say.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'm gonna recuse myself because I'm a member of the Carver Sportsman Club, even though we donated it by storm.
All right, and Mr. Hoffman, you're also recusing yourself, right? All right, so motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three to zero to two. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I should've mentioned, we're also insured too, as a 501(c)(3).
Thank you. All right, now we are back. It is 9:07. We have a poll hearing. EverSource and NSTAR requesting to relocate three polls and install two polls on Main Street, and to relocate one poll and install one poll on Montello Street. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Point of order, I don't know that we can have it because it was inaccurately posted as Main Street, and it's North Main Street. So it may seem minor for people who know the area, but it was inaccurately posted.
Good point. Ms. LaFond?
I haven't heard of Elaine, how about that?
The agenda in both notices to a butters says Main Street.
Um, the map in lot has the real address on it.
Map says North Main Street.
Yeah. Yeah, but the notice says Main Street.
Main Street, it does. You're correct.
Yeah, if the butter were to look up that map, so the, a butters list that was given were the butters of the correct address?
Yes, but it also goes in the paper too.
Yes. So if someone were to look up that map, they would see it was North Main Street.
So all the correct butters were sent notifications?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the butters list comes from the map and lot.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I still don't understand why we can have it. It was sent to the correct butters, but it wasn't posted correctly.
I agree. I mean, if, if, uh, part of a hearing is to provide the accurate information to the public to know what is actually going to be discussed, and there's a big difference between North Main Street and Main Street here in Carver, so I agree.
I do as well.
All right, well, would the board like to table that to our next, uh?
I'll make a motion. We table these till it's posted correctly in the paper and on our agenda.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have to discuss a date because our, our, our next meeting is, is our Goals and Objectives meeting, so we'll have to discuss a date and follow up on that.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to table the hearing to a future date. Any further discussion?
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Where can I find a map online of where the polls are being exist now and where they're being relocated?
Is that map online?
It's the assessor's database.
Okay.
It says the, on the, uh, notice, the assessor's map.
Do you wanna, do you want the copies here? I'll be happy to give you mine of these.
You'll need it, yeah.
No, here, I'm gonna get a new one with the right address and everything, so.
All right, thank you.
No problem, sir.
Very much.
Makes it a little easier. Have a good day.
All right, so we have a, a motion and a second to table this public hearing to a future date. Any further discussion?
I don't know how this works when you're tabling a public hearing, but if you're continuing a public hearing, it needs to be to a date certain, no?
Since we're gonna repost it, um, we can just determine a new date and time on the new posting. It's not a continuance.
Very, very good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous.
All right. It's 9/11, so we can't go to our 9:15 public hearing yet, so why don't we, uh, Mr. LaFond, if you could, could you give us a, a update from the Building Commissioner on 149 and 152 Plymouth Street?
Yes, I apologize. Our Building Commissioner is on vacation, so I will get you a written update beginning next week.
Okay, okay. Do you have, do you have any update on where we are?
I know that he has spoken to the, uh, the owners up there, believe they sent them a initial notice of their violations. After that, it would obviously go to potentially the next address, the next division legal council will send them a, a notice. Hopefully, at that point, there's compliance, but the next step is to file petition in court to compel, uh, compliance.
Okay, yes, if you could get us something in writing from the Building Commissioner as quickly as possible.
Next week, yes.
Thank you. All right, uh, next is an appointment to the Carver Cultural Council, Ellen Sordello. Uh, Ms. Sordello?
Good morning, everybody. Good afternoon.
Good morning.
Good morning. What a good day.
Would you like to?
Sure.
Tell us something.
So, um, as you all know, I've been on many different, um, groups in Carver, and I've got a terrific education in, um, how the town is working, and I have to say that I am addicted to everything going on in Carver now. Um, I'm really enjoying, um, being on the planning board, and, um, I'm looking forward to being on Arts Council. Um, I've got a background in art itself. I have been in, um, an art show at, uh, in Plymouth, and, um, I'm interested in music coming to the town and bringing forward more positive things for our children, the adults, and, um, everyone living in the town of Carver. Um, I think that we're, we're changing for the positive, and there's a lot of terrific things going on here, and I'd like to add one more, uh, council to my, um, agenda. And I hope you'll all agree with me that, um, this will be a very, um, progressive way to do it.
All right, great. Thank you. Uh, questions from the board?
No, I just wanna say thank you for the thoughtful application. You definitely seem like a good fit, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion. We approve.
I'll second that motion.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just one. Um, thank you very much. I appreciate all your time and effort, and again, your application was very good.
Thank you.
I just wanna make sure that this is not a permitting board, so it does not fall in compli, it falls in compliance with our bylaws. So I just wanna make sure that that's clear. All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it. You're welcome.
And I look forward to doing all this and being around all you folks when I can.
We have a motion? Yes, Mr.?
I just wanna thank you as well for stepping forward. I know it's tough to get involved with things, but we appreciate it.
Thank you, and I also would like to, uh, wish a happy Rosh Hashanah, the New Year, to all of our Jewish citizens in the town.
Thank you, and thank you for all you do for the town.
Thank you very much.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, it is 9:15, and, uh, we have a poll hearing scheduled. EverSource and NSTAR request four new polls on Hammond Street. Is there a motion to open this hearing?
I'll make a motion. We open the hearing.
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any members of the public that wish to address the board regarding this hearing? Hearing none. Ma'am?
Hi, Karen Johnson, on behalf of EverSource, requesting permission to, um, install the four polls that are already installed on Hammond Street.
I believe there was an issue with these polls already being installed, is that correct?
Correct. That's correct. They've already been installed.
Would you like to speak to that at all?
Well, that's what, um, my coworkers are here for.
All right, sir.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you. Ryan Earl, Community Relations. I sent a previous email kind of explaining what happened here, um, and in the transfer of kind of our new systems and upgrading our system, there's a miscommunication on the part of just internally where we had these polls set where, um, we believed that the rights was just missed and that we were ready to proceed, and that's why the polls were set in advance of this grant of location hearing.
All right, questions from the board? Um, does this, has this happened before in other towns too that?
Uh, not that, you know, I can attest to here, but, um, this is the first that I've had to come in and, you know, speak to this kind of issue.
Okay, and these are new polls that you were installed on the side of the street in the easement, correct?
Correct. Correct, yep.
Okay.
And I will, I, if I could just add that, um, when this was brought to our attention from Elaine, um, we've taken measures internally to have calls and discussions and raise this up, uh, to our higher-ups just to make sure this, this doesn't happen again, and really just to, like a, um, like a system error. And it wasn't just kind of us getting eager and going out there to, you know, set these polls without permission of the town.
And were the butters all notified, um, of this hearing that we're having today?
The butters, well, they're no credit, it sounds correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the board? Yes, Mr.?
Yeah, in my opinion, this is just unacceptable. From, if you're switching systems, you're not a, you're not a dog and pony show there. So I would, I would expect more from a company as large as EverSource, so.
And to just respond to that, we, we hold ourselves to a high standard, and, um, and we agree with that statement, that this shouldn't have happened, and we're taking all the measures internally so it doesn't happen again in the town of Carver or any of other, other communities that we serve.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Is there a motion? Is there no motion on this item? All right.
I'll make that motion for the purposes of discussion.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
You have a motion and a second. Discuss.
So thank you, Mr. Chair. So I guess my question is, um, do we have an alternative under the law to, any alternative? There's a poll, here, there's a poll location hearing. Do we have an alternative?
Mr. LaFond, I know I, I'd asked you to look into those alternatives. What?
Yes, uh, I don't know that this microphone is working, but it is, as Sarah said, it's a location hearing. It's not approval to put up a poll. It's the approval to put it in a certain place. So presumably, um, the, the board could deny this location, and then EverSource would come in with another location proposal, and this would go on and on, and, uh, we would ultimately be, um, ultimately, the utility would be able to file a petition with the board to essentially, um, compel us to allow polls in a certain place. So this, it is a location hearing, um, if you can put a poll up here, and, uh, a separate note, I have asked Town Council for, depending on what recourse the town has if this type of, uh, you know, incident happens again. I know that's separate aside from, from the first question, but I, I think it's important to know that, uh, that hopefully it'll answer that question. So, but separate aside from, from where a poll's gonna be allowed to be.
Thank, thank you. And I guess I just, as far as I'm concerned, uh, this, this is a, a very serious matter. You can't, we can't just, I understand it was an internal error, but you can't just be putting these things in without, you know, going before the town and giving a butters a chance to speak on this. So this, this can't happen again, and I, and I know whatever internal measures you folks have to take, please make sure they're in place because this, this can't happen again. And, uh?
I would remind the board, not that I need to, was that in prior, um, poll location hearing, uh, there, there was an butler who had a question about the location of the poll, and ultimately, uh, there was a compromise on where to put the poll.
That's, that's right, and that's the reason we have these hearings. It may just be a poll location hearing, but sometimes those locations are, are really important to people who live in that area. And that's why we have these hearings in the first place. Uh, anything else? Any other comments from the board?
Sort of a question. So these are four new polls, and they weren't relocation, correct?
They're new polls, correct.
It's just a correct, it's three, not some.
Right.
Can you say that?
They're supposed to be whole polls.
Okay, new polls.
They're new polls. They're not relocated. Hammond Street, the other, the other petition was for relocation.
Okay, I just see in the, in the poll hearing that was revised, it was for permission to relocate and relocate polls wise, I just wanted to make sure that this was just for, so it's not as if you took the four polls down and moved them.
Anything else?
Can I just ask you a question? Was there an butler or a resident that reached out specifically about Hammond Street that would like follow-up, or is this just a previous discussion about a different poll hearing that you mentioned?
What, what, Miss, there was a, a separate, distinct, uh, area.
Just as an example.
You were putting polls in, and there was being a site obstruction for that person?
Okay.
It was not this one.
No, okay, understood, and, and we value that process, um, and, you know, this is our mistake, and we're working that it doesn't happen again. And if there, if you receive inquiries from a butters or residents, you know, I'll have, Elaine has my email, uh, I hope, you know, the entire board does, you know, please send them my way. I'm happy to speak with them, uh, meet them on site.
Anything else from the board?
Like, I think for a future discussion, probably we need to figure this out and what any potential consequences or ramifications are, because EverSource or anyone can say, we're fixing things, this isn't gonna happen again, but when it happens again, what is it? Is it another, well, we can't tell them they can't put the poll, and we can just tell them we want it to foot down? Then what's the point of a poll hearing? So we need to figure out what consequences or ramifications are, otherwise this is useless.
Yes, we do, and I believe Mr. LaFond has reached out to council, correct, Mr. LaFond? You've reached out to council regarding what our, our options here are? Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving this? I think, I don't think we have a lot of choice here.
No, I don't think we do.
So I will reluctantly vote in favor.
I, I reluctantly vote in favor as well.
I'll reluctantly vote in favor as well.
Any against?
Aye.
It is, it is approved, three to two. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. If there's any follow-up questions, please send them my way. Thank you.
All right, next up on our agenda is a, a vote to approve a proclamation recognizing Constitution Week, which is 9/17 to 9/23. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve.
Second, I.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none.
I'm sorry, a discussion?
Yes, Mr.?
Um, so, I think people really during this time need to reflect on our Constitution, how our country was made. Our first 10 amendments gives us in the government powers. Our First Amendment is the most powerful one that we can ensure we need to protect. Those liberties are deep to my heart, so this is extremely important that our town, our residents, understand that we need to reflect on this time, uh, with the going, what's going on in the country right now. Okay, so please, think about it over this next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Here we go.
Shall we read the proclamation?
Sure. Yeah, I'll read the proclamation. "Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic, a republic dedicated by rule of law, and whereas September 17th, 2021 marks the 250th, 234th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent, magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it, and whereas public law 9/15 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Marky Townsend, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Chairman of the Town of Carver Select Board in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to affirm, to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly, vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guardians of our liberties." That is the constitution, the proclamation. Ms., Ms. Blanchard, did you have something?
Um, I had requested this proclamation on behalf of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution, as well as our local chapter, which is Duxbury Chapter of the DAR, and I appreciate the fact that you all agreed that this is an important document in the history of our country, and, uh, I appreciate the fact that, uh, you under, you are promoting this. Week we will have posters over at the library for DAR, sponsored by DAR, for Constitution Week, which is the 17th through the 23rd of September. And, um, there's one for children, there's, and then there are two more that are geared towards people who are over the age of 12, say. And, um, so I appreciate all that you are doing to promote our Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. All right, next up is a discussion and vote to approve an animal control agreement with the town of Plumpton. Mr. LaFond?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in here, I filed as you a memo last night regarding this. You have a proposed agreement in your packet, and this originates from Plumpton in a transition period with their animal control. They had asked me and Chief Doofley if there's somehow any Carver can help to provide that service to them. Chief Doofley and Plumpton's Chief Clancy have discussed it, and they approve of this arrangement. Animal control, Plumpton must be very, very little, um, activity, but they do need some of it, in the event that they, you know, have some sort of call emergency. So KP Law has drafted this agreement, which seems a little lengthy to achieve, but this is intended to achieve, no disrespect to KP Law. What this does is, uh, you know, Plumpton will pay Carver $5,000 per year for the service. Carver maintains the claim authority over the position, controls the position. An important piece here is that ACO is deemed to be an employee of the town that the ACO is in delivering service. And that's important for many types of claims, workers' compensation, so that Carver isn't on the hook for those types of claims. Each town is responsible for those claims where the ACO is operating. And this allows either town to terminate the agreement, given 45 days written notice. So if this isn't working for either town, it will have to work very long. So again, this is an agreement that has been discussed and agreed to by the chiefs of all towns.
All right. I think the key point here is that we can get out of this with 45 days notice. So if we find it's not working...
Right. And probably the concern would be if the volume becomes more than it has been just now.
I would think so. Questions from the board? Mr. Belvin? How much... Now, it's $5,000 a year that Plumpton will be paying Town of Carver for this service. Out of that $5,000, how does it relate to the number of calls per year? So how much does it cost for a... the ACO to drive down there with our vehicle, take care of those actions, what they have to take care of? If they have to pick up a dog, deliver them to Lakeville, because that's where we bring them. We bring them to Lakeville. How many... How much is that called per year? Has that been calculated down?
Well, I've been told that their volume is generally about three calls per month. It's not a lot of volume. We wouldn't be suggesting or going to be part of this if there was any significant activity.
Now I have to do the math because I didn't bring my phone with me. So it's a hundred and... Hundred... What is it, like a hundred and... That's $140 a call? Well, that's... I'm just looking at this, that 36 divided by 5,000, that's what we're talking. Somewhere around there. Not just around there. So is that sufficient enough if it goes over the 36? Because you're saying...
Well, we can certainly always ask Plumpton for more compensation or we could terminate the agreement.
Okay. Because that's... Want to make sure that whatever this costs per cycle to go down there, pick them up, or deal with whatever situation has to deal with. Now, does this also include checking different houses for their animals in per se to... If they have a farm and they have animals there, livestock, that they have to do checks for that?
Yeah, this is not an animal inspection contract, just animal control.
Just animal control only? So if someone calls and says, "Hey, my neighbor has too many chickens", or this...
Well, they'd be dispatched by Plumpton Police Department. And it's not residents calling a cop. It would be the police department who would receive a call. They would contact.
No, I understand that. But I'm just saying, is that... Is that going to include that response by our animal control officer? All right. Is she going to have to do those inspections if someone calls and complains about animal abuse or about...
This is essentially more or less a response if and when Plumpton has a situation that needs to be responded to. Chickens are not that type of... You're talking about more... This is more like domestic animal complaints.
Yeah.
Technically, that's only what it brings up.
Chickens are a bore to health, anyway.
Well... And again, the chief is in favor of this and Carver can get out of it with 45 days' notice, which I think is the key part.
Just ask me questions?
No, absolutely.
The point, though, is if it becomes a little onerous, it's very simple. Plumpton has to bring back some money or terminate the project. So it's pretty fail-safe. It's really, you know, helping a neighbor who needs some help at a cost that is... You know, the town makes a little bit of money off it, but it's not about the money. It's about providing some sort of initial aid to a neighbor who needs a little help.
And I'm not against that. I'm just thinking that I want to make sure that we are compensated for the services that we're providing. And if it goes over the $5,000 or this 36 because of three per month, then we get compensated for that. Mr. Belvin?
I think I know what you're talking about. Jim, you can probably add some real-world situation where the animal control officers involved more was when I was on planning board, we had a public hearing. Someone wanted to have a hobby kennel at her house and raise and train dogs for service members. And the animal control officer was involved in that permitting process. She did cite visits there and she did come to planning board meetings and stuff. So I think maybe that's what you're asking for beyond just responding to dog calls, where she would have to do stuff? Because she does do more than just respond to a dangerous dog, at least in this town. And then my question, the $5,000, is that just going into general fund? Or is it...
It's just general fund.
Okay. It would have been nice to seen that targeted to wherever.
Well, we have creative wall fund that elects to do that. So we need to tell the GoTo Creator Fund to do that. For $5,000, that's... Seems like a lot to ask in town. And the reality is that this may not work. It may not work to everybody's satisfaction.
Seems fine. Just if we're getting money, let's make sure it's being used for what it's being given for.
I have one question.
Mr. Belvin?
On page three of the agreement, it says that the service is provided beginning July 1st, 2021. So that would have to change.
That's a good question.
Anything else from the board? Hearing none. Is there a motion? I'll make a motion we approve.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous.
We will make Plumpton point out that calls that come to the office, calls probably go to select one member or so.
All right. Town administrator update. Mr. LaFond?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In your packet, you have a synopsis. First one is our town's update. Mr. O'Brien could not be here this morning, but he has two checks for us totaling $66,000. He will be scheduled some other time if he can deliver his checks himself. Obviously, we'll let everybody know that is. He also informed me that the $313,000 submission, he expects that to be outsold. He's telling me that that will actually predate... Actually, that'll be out before the one that predates that of $289,000. We currently have about $100,000. But we have a rolling tally of those items that we plan to submit. That tally will bring us over a full amount, $100,000, by about $100,000. And Tom agrees it's probably a healthy number.
Doesn't it, if I could, Mr. LaFond, doesn't it seem like it's taking them quite a bit of time to get those up?
It takes an absurd amount of touchless. Well, again, I spoke to Tom O'Brien this past week. And I don't like blaming Tom, but it's certainly a process that seems to be much, much longer than what it looks like.
Yeah. We've had some of this money... I mean, how long's it been outstanding for? Seems like it's been submitted for quite a while, right?
Yes, a little bit goes back to the summer.
Did he have any reason why he felt it was that long?
No, he didn't.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Moving on. Just with regard to that, we do have touchless doors that are being installed up front. The threshold hinges have been replaced and it's just a mechanism to open the doors. They're not going to replace the doors themselves. With ARPA, eventually, we're going to have some conversations. The board is going to have some conversations how we wish, from a policy standpoint, to target those funds. I know we have a meeting coming up soon with Habitat for Humanity to discuss to what extent housing can be targeted with these funds. We have had some conversation about what we think of some of the infrastructure and communication, especially those types of... Get this room so we can hear everybody and people can hear it home. So there's a lot of things we can do with the money, but it's probably going to go fast. That's why it's going to take some policy decisions by the board. We've received a first allotment of $615,000. It's one half of our total allotment. And we have approximately two years to spend these funds. I would hope that, you know, within the next couple of months, we should have calls and see what we can do with those funds. And I am following the trail of information, not just from Massachusetts, but from around the country as to what some of the jurisdictions are hoping to do with these funds.
When that ARPA money comes into the town, does that just go into the general fund with a separate line item? Is that how we handle it?
Well, it wouldn't go to the general fund, but it is going and is being held aside in a separate fund.
Okay.
Home screen. Kevin has notified all of the 19 residences regarding the staffs. We are expecting that Langdon Environmental or Engineering is going to have a meeting with the residents and interested public officials. However, at the moment, we have submitted to DEP a recommended plan for the 19 residences. As you probably recall, there's five residences who are immediately impacted. There's two that are not necessarily impacted. And the remainder of the head note test results at all that are related to the issue. Unfortunately, DEP has not been helped at all and I only recognize a cast. Study recommendations in Langdon Environmental have been at the hands of DEP for a couple of weeks now. And unfortunately, we had a conversation this past week with DEP and we are not to expect anything different from DEP other than what I term passive approval of DEP. DEP is going to say we approve the call. So at some point, we're going to go forward with the meeting. And DEP has answered questions and DEP will likely not be there. I don't know that that's a bad thing because DEP is not going to provide a definitive measure that our engineering firm can't provide. The other piece the board has voted to brush these drive homes as quickly as possible. We do have three votes for all the teammates. There's a contract they worked on that a company blew as a little bit and once that's in place, it should be this coming week. We will edit the lead for those. One other question becomes and we'll explore the answer this week. We have four in the line of lane. What happens if any of these properties especially five, want to be hooked up or choose not to? Four, so refuse to allow people on the property, so they're going to be hooked up. So we did talk about the legal implications of those and the legal authority and the body health and service circumstances. Hopefully, that's not going to be necessary or a lot of security for P and L.
Mr. LaFond? As far as the timeline the town has to work with to complete this project, I assume we're on track?
Yeah, we have already completed requirements of the administrative consent. Administrative consent are only required to put the line in the slots to connect. In good faith, as you know, the town has appropriated funds to address each of the 19 homes. The first five, as you can see, will be gone by the line as voted. Even though we've completed our requirements under the administrative consent, it obviously doesn't make a lot of sense for not having these homes hooked up. Kind of defeats the purpose of the ARPA compliance in administrative consent.
Has DEP had any conversations with the town about what happens if there's a resident that does not allow the town on their property?
Not D E P, our council has advised, Health can help to report the residents to, to, to order that there be access to the property. If the property owner doesn't allow that, the Board of Health can go to court to compel compliance. Obviously, that's not where any of us will be, but the Board of Health does have the authority to do that in the event that's necessary. I certainly hold an expectation, won't be necessary. Board of Health is tremendous if there aren't even up to the full nineteen residences. So unfortunately, you know, well, I'm not sure I'm forcing it, but we certainly hold an expectation that will not be an issue. The Board of Health is quite extensive authorities. Especially where a remedy has been, is in place and been offered by the town, there's essentially no cost to the residences.
Mr. Belvin. Doesn't the consent order, the consent order also has a date where we have to finish the whole project of hooking people up to the, to? As of October, I could.
Administrative consent order.
Or November, November.
Administrative consent order hopefully applies to the line itself and stocks each property.
I thought it was.
And that date was November thirtieth, and we've already completed everything that's been required.
And as I said, it doesn't make a lot of sense not to ensure that these homes are hooked up and choose to be. Questions often are going to come from Board of Health. But those twelve properties that haven't had any testing, or don't require any more testing, where the line is in. What, what's going to happen to those properties? Speculation is that over a period of time, there will be other entitlements that apparently aren't required for testing. Or it's very possible that the current code could ultimately affect those properties too. So the Board of Health is going to have to make a decision as to whether or not it's a field. Something they should be requiring all of the residences. And that's going to be part of the conversation here. Hopefully, those people will show up, and the Board of Health and the engineer will have a committee to wait. We were hoping, again, to try to have D E P in community waiting, that was part of the schedule we were hoping to achieve. Unfortunately, that's, fortunately or unfortunately, that's not going to happen. So it really is a matter of workers are interinterfered now, scheduled appropriately at times.
And, Mr. Chairman.
And again, sorry, while we were hoping to at least have some form of passive approval of D E P. So that we don't have complaints here, and then have D E P say something else. One of the, we've had situations where D E P has responded to some of the citizens' questions in a way that we were looking consistent with what they're providing advice to the town. So that's why, even though D E P is going to give, we're not going to come up with a written statement approving the town's recommendation. We certainly want to have, yes, it's been an enhanced two weeks. And we want to have some assurances that we're not going to be subject.
Okay. Um, has town council drawn up those three agreements that we requested, so we can submit those to the residents?
Town council has told us until the Board of Health has made some sort of decision, probably want to handle these homes. It's, the town is unable to do that. Board of Health has to make their decisions first, or others will do a different category of decision. There's two different categories essentially of residences. And until they decide, it may very well be that the Board of Health is ordering all nineteen to work up. So until we know what the Board of Health requires from being, it may very well be that an agreement is necessary because it's essentially compliant with the order of Board of Health, or the Board of Health is, 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 is. So until we know exactly, the town council has advised that until we know what the Board of Health's decision's going to be, it's premature to get any type of contract. Effectively, there may be some sort of sign off by residences. But an actual contract at this time is premature.
Mr. Chairman. I disagree because my feeling is, is I'd rather have the residents make a decision, all right? And give them that opportunity to make a decision on it, and provide it to our town, say, okay, yes or no. I don't think saying, all right, well, the Board of Health's going to make the determination no matter what, okay? It's kind of heavy handed, in my opinion, in the way that it was just described to us, okay? I think you get a little bit more with sugar than you do vinegar. And I just want to make sure that it's under the residence, you have the right to decide this, okay? Please make your decision, rather than whatever the Board of Health says, they goes, and screw you, our residents. I don't like that idea.
Well, I completely appreciate your concern, and that's why the Board of Health tends to have a meeting with the engineering firm. So the engineering firm can explain the creations and different options. And ultimately, it's not a decision of select, it is a decision by the Board of Health.
Okay. Mr. Belvin.
I was going to ask about the, the forms that Bob asked about.
Is that better?
I think.
I'm sorry, Jenna, I.
I was going to ask about the forms that Bob had asked about.
Sure, okay. So again, it's premature, but town council ultimately will be able to recommend the right instrument for the different categories. But as I said, it's premature until we know exactly what the Board of Health is going to either recommend or require.
And do we know when they're making that determination?
Well, not until after a community meeting, which at this point is probably not going to be for another two weeks.
Okay.
Mr. Haft, I just have a quick question. So we're soliciting three quotes for the services for all nineteen.
That's true.
So what, so what happens if it only ends up being five homes? Does that affect the contract, the price per home?
It does not. That was one of the concerns we had, if we go back in time, we forgot too, whether or not it would be considered bid splitting to do, you know, to do a, an entire procurement, or to do one procurement, five, another procurement for the rest of, the rest of the homes. I consider at that time, it's a bid split to the individuals. After some thought, town council had told us that they were not considered as bid splitting if they did one for all these. So, so it's not, it's not a bid splitting situation. And it's something that town council is trying to be doing. The contractor knows, and all the contractors know, but they didn't, that, that it could be five, or it could be between five and nineteen. That was what I certainly we had. And the bidding process is, you know, someone has to know the bidding.
Sure.
So, so we'll put it this way, contractors, we had three big, you know, there's a little bit of risk involved. Apparently, it's not a significant, you would thought, not being knowledgeable in that field.
I'm trying to make sure the contractors knew it could be anywhere from.
Right, well, that was, that was a concern we had too, you know, a whole lot of bid on something, essentially a large area.
Right. Great, thank you.
Yeah, and the different contractors did a lot of looking as well. So they know what they're, what they're getting involved in.
All right.
Okay. Moving on, Lakeview Street?
Montello Street.
Oh, Lakeview's.
Lakeview.
Going on his.
The agenda says Montello, but the spreadsheet says something else.
Lakeview Street, at this point, towards the end of July, we did have a site walk out there. A number of us from the C P C, C O A, Rec Committee, and the Buzz and Day Coalition. The site walk was intended to have some expertise input from the Buzz and Day Coalition to essentially tell us if it was their property, what options would you be exploring. Unfortunately, they've had a little late in getting back to us. Savory Moors might be checking in with them this week when he returned from being out of town. And there was this coming week, as of yesterday, last night, some of us were intending to have a schedule, a meeting to discuss the question of, or the opportunity to install Pickleball at the C O A. If you go back in time a little bit, I think you recall that before we decided to go forward with that, that type of proposal, we had looked, we did have the group out there to take a look at the property altogether, just to make sure there weren't any varied ideas as to whether or not this puts a different spin on how we should treat the entire property now that we purchased the Lakeview, forty-four Lakeview Street. Plus, Romeo is doing the, the design of, down there for Pickleball courts. They're treating some feasibility study for six courts. Now they're designing the six courts, and again, we were supposed to have a site walk down there yesterday afternoon, but we got, we got rained out. The goal here is to have some design, design of places and process estimates to be able to submit funding issues to C P C. So we have rescheduled this meeting, site walk, until next Tuesday. I believe it's nine o'clock. If anybody's interested, I should believe it's ten o'clock. If anybody is interested in your call, it should be emailed. Confirm that. If we got to, I'm sorry, you mentioned that Montello's, okay, I don't have a written update on that.
Maybe that's the, during North Carver updating this.
Yeah, and then, you know, I did have a memo that I filed for board, I felt that I could be more of it. I don't know that the public needs more than what, than what you already know, than we're already discussing. With the, the urban renewal project, the technical review accounts are all in place. The town didn't know that goes back a little ways, but the R D As is now approved by both parties, not just by the R D A. They bring in with Jensen Lewis to assist a fire department in assessing their needs, has also been in place. And the R D A is now in the process of establishing means to provide information to the community. They do have a page on our town's website, that's been in place for a little while. They do have a person that they have selected who can more or less be attracted to this marketing activity. To the extent, though, that the town is able to get good information, obviously, it depends a lot upon what information we can get from Hillwood. That hasn't been a problem, challenge, problem, call it what you want. But the time is tipping, we're going to have a call down meeting. I think most of us agree at this point that that's not likely, it's not feasible. And if we were to try to do that, we would have a project that would likely not be approved by the town. One of the things we discussed when I met with the fire chief, representatives of Hillwood and fire, engine, fire science engineer, was the problem, I think we've all talked about it, to put the central chicken in the end. Hillwood doesn't, doesn't know who the right user is, the fire chief is really not in a position to adequately, or to consistently assess exactly what type of equipment he may need. So one of the things we did discuss is if there's some sort of legal instrument that they can use to assure the town that Hillwood would be willing and required to put, put in place certain conditions for the, for the town. As of right now, the, as I said, we're not, we're not feeling confident that we know enough about the project. I think our public safety concerns are probably paramount here, which is obviously traffic concerns and other, other concerns about other physical impacts. But before the planning board is put in a position on a potential site there to view if the town should be willing to approve some sort of zoning change. I know if I were on the planning board, I'd be very uncomfortable with that. We have five people, I wouldn't want to be one of those five during the cycle of the new project process. If I didn't have, you know, ironclad assurances from Hillwood that they would be accommodating, whatever the town needs might be. And again, we're not sure what those needs are until the end user is identified. So the town, you know, public safety departments, particularly fires, in a difficult situation, unless there's some, I, I call it a legal instrument, that will satisfy everybody's needs. So that, that's going to be a very important legal question as to if there's, if there's some way that we can accommodate. We don't know the answer yet because we haven't quite, got to that point where there's at least some basic understanding of what the chief may need. We've also engaged in, well, the, let's say, developer has begun to engage with fiscal, not fiscal policy, the fiscal impact study, I believe it was last week or the week before, we met the public safety departments and financial staff. Met on a Zoom meeting with the woman who is conducting this on behalf of Hillwood. There's always a question when you're dealing with somebody who's working for the developer, whether or not any type of result is going to be skewed in, in that, in that direction. I think that having had conversations with Judy Barrett, about consulting, she's done a lot of municipal work around the area. There is at least some level of confidence that there's going to be a job, that she's going to conduct a survey and review and provide a product that is not something that's going to be really detrimental to the town, and it's going to be fair for, for all of us. There isn't a date yet for completion of the study, but I actually overheard a phone call at eleven o'clock today. If you allow me to check. And the other matter I have here for an update is Cranberry Village Wells. Town council, Katie Klein, discussed this with me and legal counsel for Cranberry Village. There are two options conveying this, one is through an R F P process. That is so defined that there really wouldn't be any other possible bidder except Cranberry Village. The other option would be to deal with, to do it through a special act of the legislature. Her ultimate recommendation is that we do it through a special act. Specifically because if you tailor an R F P so narrowly, it could be considered an illegal procurement. And although it's unlikely that anybody would, would submit a bid protest, you know, bottomless, you just never know. I mean, the special legislation process would, would tend to take longer. But if we're dealing with bid protests and investigation by the state, that could certainly back up any type of process to convey the property. So Katie Klein, town council, will be drafting an appropriate article for us, that whenever our next town meeting is, to hopefully move forward with some legislative act to accomplish that.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Belvin. Do we own the land that the well is on, the town?
Yes.
All right. Has it been any talk of how much the assessed price of that land is?
My understanding that it's in excess of thirty-five thousand dollars is the, is the freight, the assessed value. Now, keep in mind, it's town property, and keep in mind, there's nothing anybody can do with that property except provide water to Cranberry Village. But town does put some resources into doing so, basically through hiring a, a small water systems. There isn't a tremendous amount of labor that the town puts in. As you know, the costs for that are recouped through an enterprise fund that is paid for by the residences. The challenge is going to be that there's significant infrastructure needs and leakage in that system, which is causing extremely high water bills in Cranberry Village. So the goal is obviously to put it in the hands of Cranberry Village themselves, because there's really nothing else the town can do with that property except provide water to Cranberry Village.
And, Mr. Chairman. I think if we remember, if I remember correctly, is we passed a bylaw that only the town of Carver can be a water provider in the town of Carver, if I remember correctly. So it's in our bylaw that no one else could actually sell water through this type of entity, so.
Right, and right now, if there's a convenience of these wells, the town would not be selling water. Not only that, for whatever bylaw we might have in place, it'd be superseded by a special act. Something that the town council, we can take it up.
Well, I was just looking at the sense of we put a bid out there. I mean, to be honest, we don't have to accept the bid, if we put it out there, and.
If you submit, if you do construct an R F P, and sign a qualified bidder, does submit a proposal, and the town does not accept that proposal, then we, we would have a problem.
Only if they were.
If you don't have a responsive proposal, something that doesn't meet all the technical aspects of that proposal, then the town can reject that proposal. Or if the proposal, let's just say for the sake of argument, is, you put out an R F P, part of that R F P is for, and there's a minimum bid involved in that R F P, and there are no proposers who meet that minimum bid, well, then there are no responsive proposals. If we do have multiple bids, one of the bid requirements, specifications, is, is minimum bid, and now you're in the situation where, let's say the minimum bid is twenty thousand, and you have multiple responsive bidders, then we're looking at, you know, the highest and the lowest cost of responsible bidders. You can't reject a response just because, you know, like the results if it's compliant with the R F P. Now, who else would have bid on this property? It would seem like that nobody else has any interest in this, but quite frankly, you don't know.
But if we have a bylaw that says you can't, you can't sell water through your water system here, that really limits the, the use of that property to an extent, because it's not a buildable lot.
Well, it also has a, you know, it's a, you know, there's, there's not just a wellhead, but there's a watershed area that is protected. So you're right, we can't do anything else on that property. That's why, to the extent of the town, the town has zero interest in that property. The only thing that does is feed water to Cranberry Village. And to the extent that Cranberry Village is willing to accept the cost and the liability of doing that, it seemed to make sense. And that's also why Katie Klein has recommended special legislation. Because, you know, in essence, any, any bylaws we might have that may be conflicting would be superseded by a special act.
Well, before we do, in my opinion, before we do a special act for this, is that I think we have to have some type of an agreement with Cranberry Village of, of paying for that system, that the town, the town built that, if I remember correctly, or.
Now, the town, it was owned by David Piper Senior.
That's right.
And it was conveyed to the town. Obviously, I don't know why that was, but I think, I speculate that there may have been a time when there was some thought that maybe that could be a water system in that area of the town, that may be expandable, and might provide all the types of opportunities. I don't know that for certain, but that's, you know, that would seem to be the, the logic of, the logic of the town accepting those from Mr. Piper back in those days.
You're right. It was the, the option of possibly bringing it over to Pine's, the other.
Village.
Pine Tree Village, and maybe other people's area there too, so. But we have put a great deal of money into that system too, over the years, so.
Yeah, it's going to need a lot, it needs a lot of infrastructure help.
Well, I think the infrastructure, most of it has to do with Cranberry Village and their water lines.
Well, I, I don't know to what extent it's, you know, before it gets to the village, but I would, I think that would be a fair, fair mistake.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Lafont. Let's see, minutes, licenses, topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair, forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. Our next meeting will be on nine fourteen twenty twenty-one, that will be our town administrator interviews. And our next regular meeting will be on nine twenty-one at five thirty. And just so everyone knows, that meeting will be regarding the select board goals and objectives, and that will actually take place at the fire station and not, not in this building. Let's see, minutes of August seventeenth twenty twenty-one, is there?
The nine fourteen, that's at one o'clock?
One o'clock. All right. Minutes of August seventeenth, is there a, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August seventeenth.
A second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
I have one quick question on, at least my copy. Would the motion go in executive session? Those are blank. Those are blank.
Where, where is exactly, is.
Right, right, in, in the second paragraph, motion going executive session, the, whoever made the motion, second, it was, it was blank.
Another blank.
I think that may be in my minutes.
Okay.
I think.
Why don't we, why don't we table this to the next meeting, and we'll.
That's right, Jen took minutes.
We'll get that information for you. All right, is our motion to table?
Motion to table.
A second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. All right, we have a request for road race approval, the Charles River Wheelman Cranberry Century Ride on October third twenty twenty-one. Is there a motion?
Make a motion, approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Select board community announcements, Mr. Hoffman?
I just want to wish all those people that celebrate the Jewish New Year, Happy New Year, Happy and Healthy New Year for this coming year.
Thank you, Ms. Hewens.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to thank you for having a moment of silence in honor of everyone who suffered loss on nine eleven twenty years ago.
My pleasure, thank you. Ms. Belvin.
Well, I echo their sentiments, and I hope that the first week of school has gone well. gone well for the public school. First time starting a school year, full person, full in time, what, I hope school's going well.
Thank you. Mr. Belvin?
A, we received a, just email whatnot, a notice about a member of a board who contracted COVID and that, I think what was developed as a sign-in sheet when you go to board and committee meetings, so I think the public needs to understand that, the rationale of why these sign-in sheets are there and the importance of it, but also that the sign-in sheets, I don't think does enough. And I think that anytime a town official becomes ill because of COVID, is that the public is made aware that a potential exposure may have happened. And it's concerning to me that somebody who does contract COVID and does come in contact with residents from a town board committee or commission, I think the town has a due diligence to notify the public that an exposure could have happened and that the public should be aware of those, not just internally, people notified, that the public, if it's a public hearing, a public meeting. So those sign-in sheets are important, but legally, you don't have to sign in and check in. Just want to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just have a couple of things. First of all, again, tomorrow is the 20th anniversary of 9/11, and next week is Carver Public Safety Recognition Week. And I just want to take a, take a minute to just thank all our public safety officers for all they do for our town every day, much of it unrecognized, and they don't look for recognition, but we, we need to be thankful for all they do. So, so thank you to everybody. And also, just last week, or earlier this week, King Richard's Fair opened, it's their 40th anniversary here in Carver, so I just wanted to congratulate them on their 40th anniversary. And that's all I have. There are no select board notes. So the next item on our agenda is discussion and possible vote to enact the extension of the interim town administrator's contract extension. Mr. Lefont has an article in his contract that gives the select board the opportunity to enact a one-year extension. That has to happen by October 1st if we wish to, wish to enact it. So I think it's important for the board to be aware of it and take action one way or another. So is there a motion from the board?
I'll make a motion, we take no action on this subject.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Mr. Chair, if I may. My understanding is that since we are currently looking for a permanent town administrator, it seems to me the appropriate action would be not to extend the contract. You're welcome to China, Mr. Lefont.
I think this, somebody may look at this from the outside and look at this as a negative thing, but it's, it's a business decision.
It's purely an administrative act. It's in the contract and the board needs to be aware of it.
I think, you're right, you don't, you don't want to be paying two people to do this in Joe, for some people, the town. Now, you do have another meeting or two before, you know, before October, but again, it's, it would seem to make, it would be logical to do that.
Not to extend it.
Correct.
Well, right now, we have a motion and a second before the board to take no action. So is that, is there any further discussion on that?
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No. I said no.
So what was the vote? Was it, did we, two?
Two, two in favor, three against, taking no action.
Motion failed?
Correct.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion that we not extend the contract, so that we're not paying three people at the same time.
That's my idea. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Hoffman?
So the motion was to not extend?
The contract. Since we're looking for a permanent town administrator, if we take no action and, or extend the contract and then hire a permanent town administrator, now we, then we would be paying the new TA, the current ITA, and the former TA.
So I guess my, my question was the difference between, so taking no action meant we just...
The board, the board has to consciously enact the extension. The extension doesn't automatically happen, so we have to, we have to vote to, to extend his contract. Otherwise...
But if we, I'm sorry, but by taking no action, my purpose was that, since we're taking no action, we're not in, it's basically, we're not going to extend his contract, would be my intent, was just kind of an easy way of saying, hey, we're not going to extend your contract.
No, it's a very unclear way of saying that. It's much better just to say you're not extending the contract, then it's really clear.
Well, it opens up...
In my opinion.
My feeling is the way I did it, it opens it up that if we take no action on it now, it allows us to bring it up in the future. That was my point, is that if it, if we deny it, we're denying it, great, then we're not going to bring it back, because once you deny it, we're not going to bring it back. So that was my intent for that, because it opens up the doors, but hey, you want to deny it, I have no problem with that.
I just wanted to see the difference between the two reasons behind the, two motions, that's all.
All right. I'm sorry, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I did.
Your second, okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of not, not extending the contract?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. All right. Next up is discussion and possible vote on the town administrator screening committee recommendations, scheduling, and the process for interviews. And Mr. Lefont, since you're one of the applicants, I think maybe it'd be appropriate if you, if you didn't join us for this portion of the meeting, if you don't mind.
Are you asking me to recuse myself?
Yes.
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Lefont. All right, I see two members of our screening committee here, the chair, Mr. Walsh, and Chief Weston, if either one of you would like to come up? Morning, how are you?
I'm good. How are you? How is everyone?
All right, so we all received the town administrator screening committee recommendations, and we've scheduled interviews for 1 o'clock on September 14th. Ms. Weston, both, both applicants are able to be here on 9/14, correct? And what is the, what's scheduled, Ms. Weston?
1 o'clock and 2:30, so 1 o'clock for James Kelly, 2:30 for Rick LaFon.
Okay. As far as the process for interviews, I believe now some questions for the applicants just came in yesterday, so I haven't had a chance to get together with Ms. Weston and fully go over the questions. I want to go over them to make sure we, there may be, very well be some duplication in what members have asked, but I think that the format would be, you know, similar to what we did, most of you, Ms. Bogart, Mr. Hoffman, you weren't here, but what we, the way we interviewed the interim town administrator applicants a little over a year ago, we have questions for each one. Area 58 will be here, but they will be taping the interviews, not broadcasting it live, because we don't want whoever goes second to have access to those, those questions. So we'll sit down, we'll get an email out either this afternoon or early Monday morning with the, with the questions for each, each member, and we'll go from there. Any thoughts on that? Yes, Mr. Belvin?
I have an issue. We asked for three names from the board, and they gave us three names. We were told, all of us, not to say anything about the applicants, and I didn't say anything, but I did get calls and messages from different people and boards, not boards, employees about this, so clearly somebody knows, somebody passed it on to these people that, who the applicants were. But the public needs to understand, we only have two people we're interviewing for. I think that's not appropriate. I think that we need another person to have three to interview. Has nothing to say with each one of these other two applicants, it's that I think we should interview three people for the position, not just two.
Okay. Any other, just, Mr. Hoffman?
A question, the, the charge that we gave to the committee, what, what was the final candidate that we thought, that we felt was necessary?
I think it was up, it was up to five. I believe that's what it was, it was up to five. And remember, the, the screening committee did give us three applicants, one subsequently withdrew from consideration, but they did provide the board with three names, but I believe the original charge was up to five.
It was, yeah.
So was there, because I remember one copy I had said four, but then I know we changed that.
We, we, it was four, and then we changed it at a subsequent, subsequent meeting at the request of the screening committee, could I?
Did you say up to five?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's right, that was request of the screening committee, yeah.
So, Mr. Chairperson, because I did send an email to, sorry, Tom, Mr. Walsh, I'm sorry, asking that I think the board, the committee should bring forward other applicants for us. They inter, they had 12, I think, total, two disregarded, 10, and out of those 10, you picked six to interview. So in the board, in the committee's opinion is that there were six people that were qualified for the position, and they only brought us three. One's already said he's declined, so I think we need to have other applicants to go with this pool, so we have a better pool that we can pick from. I think two is just not enough.
Well, I guess...
Can I just correct just a couple of your facts?
Please, Mr. Walsh.
You're correct, we had 10 out of the 12 that people thought met the qualifications. We did decide we wanted to interview, or the committee decided they wanted to interview six, one withdrew, so we were left to only interviewing five.
Okay.
Okay. We interviewed five applicants and we, with the, with the attempt to make the list as large as we could, up to five for you, and we came away with three. And I talked to town council, I really can't say anything about the people that are on that finalist list, whether collectively or in general, because it's not fair to them, but I can tell you that trying to mine someone else out of this group will not be productive.
Ms. Bogart?
I feel similarly to Bob, that two is not enough, and in reflecting on this and trying to come up with the right words, which probably won't come out, and hearing you say you can't mine more candidates, I would like to see the screening committee given more time to repost and, and to search for more applicants based on, on, is it true, you had the memo that we got said that it was posted to the MMA? How was it advertised?
It was advertised on the MMA website.
And, and that's it?
Right.
Because I, I looked at the Beacon, the MMA newsletter that goes out, I read that and...
I think it, I think it gets in, what's that?
It was online only, it was not in print.
Right, it wasn't in the Beacon, and they were given such a short timeframe for this that...
Given a month.
Yeah, having one advertisement and yielding this, in my opinion, was not a successful search, not to, to their fault, but maybe to the, the charge given. So to try to sum this up, I would let, and I remember at some point during the process, I don't remember who, I don't remember when, but I remember we did say, what happens if at the end of this, we don't have anyone? And I forget who said the response, but it was, well, we try again. So this is nothing against the two people, I'm not saying the two finalists should be disregarded, but I do think that we should take more time to find a larger applicant pool. And if the screening committee thinks that the ones they have now are not the best, I think we should extend the time to try to get more applicants, and maybe it does involve a recruiter, maybe it doesn't, but I just don't think two is doing the position justice.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, so I, I understand what you're saying, Mrs. Bogart, but on the other hand, technically, the way the bylaw reads, that we are supposed to select candidates from the list the screening committee gives us.
But it doesn't say the first list, it just says a list.
Well, it doesn't, it also doesn't say we can keep doing this indefinitely.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, and, and I have a great deal of respect for the, for the screening committee, and I think that, as Mr. Walsh pointed out, they did give us three candidates, and it's clearly not their fault that one of them decided to withdraw.
So what happens if we interview these two people and we're not comfortable hiring either of, is this forcing our hand to hire either of these two men?
My opinion, my opinion, the screening committee has given us what they feel are their recommendations. I think at this point, I think at this point, the best course of action for the board would be interview those applicants and then make a decision whether you want to offer a contract to one of those applicants, and if at that point you didn't feel comfortable doing that, then the board could go back and say, well, we'd like to, we'd like to do this again. But I think at this point, the screening committee has, has done their job, they've done what we asked them to do, and I think we have a responsibility to follow through on our end and, and interview those candidates.
Okay, I, I feel differently, but that's what makes us the board.
That's, Mr. Hoffman, do you have any thoughts here?
Yeah, I, my question was the same as Jen, that what if we don't fill either one of the applicants after the interviews is, do we feel comfortable boarding them in, then, then what's the next step?
Well, I think Ms. Ms. Hewens stated it rather well. I think we, we, there is a bylaw, the bylaw requires us to hire from a list presented to us from a screening committee. We've got that list, but I, I don't think there's anything that would stop the board if they didn't feel, for whatever reason, that they wanted to hire one of those applicants on the list, from going back and asking for another list.
Which is what I'm suggesting now.
You know, because first of all, Tom, I want to thank you and your committee. I know that was, we gave you a tough timeline, for whatever reason, you know, just a lot of different things, but you, you and your committee did a great job in such a short time, and I know it wasn't easy.
That's true.
And we really appreciate it. I know, of course I do. And the rest of the committee, that you guys did a great job.
And if you do get to that point, maybe you should get a new screening committee. I would really suggest that that might be something you actively consider, just because the screening committee's already kind of done a lot of work, and I'm, this is something to consider, that that might be the way to go.
Mr. Belvin?
Nowhere in the bylaw that it's ever come into a contingency that one of the three of the candidates that were given to us was going to drop out, and we're only left with a 50-50 opportunity to pick this one or that one. I think it would be sensible that we ask the committee to provide us another name to fill in and we interview. So I'm going to make a motion that we instruct the town administrative screening committee to provide us with another name so that we can interview out of the, the six that they interviewed.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? All right, motion fails. Okay. All right. So I think at this point, if there's no further discussion, Mr. Walsh, is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, I was prepared to go through a, kind of a detailed synopsis of what the committee went through, so that you could see that it was a good thorough process, in case that was what was being thought of, that maybe it wasn't as thorough process as it could have been, but I am not looking forward to doing that, based on where you've arrived, that's great. Have a nice weekend.
Mr. Belvin?
My questioning is not against what the committee did or how they did their job, okay? It's not. It's just a reflection of that, we never intended to have one person drop out after you give us... us a series of names.
If I could speak openly, which I can't-
Please do, I mean-
No, I can't. If I could speak openly, I could explain to you why that's, you're not going to get any more out of this group. But I can't, and that's why I hesitated coming here, but here that, this, this I am convinced is the only three that came in, and unfortunately, then one withdrew. And I think that the, as things change, if you were to go to the point where you decide not to hire from what is remaining of the list, then perhaps a new process with a new committee might produce different results, because it won't be perceived that there's already someone there who's in the job, also going to be applying for the job.
Could I just ask?
Ms. Hewens and Mr. Hoffman?
Yes, so, Mr. Walsh, I just want to make it clear, the reason you can't be completely open about the process is because it was mostly an executive session.
It was all an executive session, all of these matters, and I asked specifically yesterday, Mr. Sussen, or Zesson, or whatever his name is, from KP Law-
From KP Law.
And asked him, what can I say? And in anticipation of this very moment, and he said nothing. You don't make any comments collectively or individually about the people who aren't on the list, it isn't fair to them, they were told it would be confidential, they all have people within their circles who knows they applied, there's no reason for anyone to be making comments about, that could be, reflect how they did on the, in the process. It's not fair, it's not right, and that's why I don't have much to say.
And it's not legal.
And it's not legal.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Hoffman?
So you just made a comment before Sarah's question about someone that was in the position now, so I guess my question, which I know is in the back of my mind, I guess it's just an opinion from, from the screening committee, I don't know if you can answer it or not, but because of the applicants, and one of the applicant was the current ITA, do you think that hurt the amount of people that applied for the position?
It's only my opinion-
Right.
But, and I think there was a general feeling that it, that the fact that someone is in the job, has an interim, who was here 17 years before that, who's now been doing the job a total of 18 and a half years, and is going to be applying for the job, that might suppress the number of people compared to a situation where there's no one in the job, and they're looking for someone, and there's no one even there as an interim. I think that would suppress the turnout. But I was very pleased to get 12, and I was afraid we were going to get like three or four. We did get 12, and I thought that was a good number, and from what I've been told by some people, there seems to be a lot of this going on now, if you go out on the internet, town administrator screening committees, this is not a totally untypical number to get. And, and again, this whole process was done from the point of view of wanting to try to get as many people up to the limit of five as possible for the select board. And so I just know that those three are, and, and I think in all fairness to the process and to what the people did, going back now and starting, asking them to start doing a redo, I'll tell you, I'm not going to do it. I won't, I won't take part in that.
Anything else? All right, so I think the process as of now will be to start town administrator interviews on September 14th, and we will move forward from, from there. Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Thanks very much.
And thank you and your committee, please pass that along, that we, we appreciate everything they've done.
Okay.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous.